Let us bow our heads. Almighty and ever-loving God, we gather once again in this chamber with hearts open to your guidance and grace. As we resume our work this week, we offer you our gratitude for the strength and clarity you provide, and for the privilege of serving the Filipino people. Lord, our nation continues to face many social ills that weigh heavily on the daily lives of our people: inequality, hardship, division, and the lingering burdens of systems that have long failed the most vulnerable. These challenges confront our farmers who toil under the sun, our fisherfolk who brave uncertainties, our workers striving to provide for their families in every community seeking dignity and opportunity. We lift these realities to you, Lord, today. May you comfort those who struggle, uplift those who feel forgotten, and give renewed hope to those working tirelessly to build a better life. As members of this house, grant us the humility to listen and amid our shortcomings, the courage to act and confront what is broken in our institutions, and the wisdom to discern what truly serves the common good. In the face of adversity, may we be good shepherds of transparency, accountability, and good governance; strengthen our commitment to uphold integrity in our decisions, fairness in our deliberations, and compassion in every policy we pursue. Lord, this season of Advent and Christmas reminds us of the values that bind us together: generosity, reconciliation, selflessness, and love. May these guide our debates and shape our choices, let the spirit of the season temper our differences, deepen our understanding of one another, and illuminate the path toward unity and shared purpose. Help us to see beyond partisanship, to rise above discord, and to remember that our work here must always lead to greater justice, dignity, and opportunity for our people. May this Congress be a true community of service, one that reflects the hope and promise of this blessed land. one that reflects the hope and promise of this blessed season. As we open today's session, Lord, we entrust our tasks and our nation to your guiding hand. May all that we do be anchored in sincerity, humility, and love for country. Amen.
The Secretary General is directed to call the roll of members. Roll call of members: Honorable Representatives: Abalos, Abante, Asidre, Ako, Acosta, Adyong, Advingula, Agrao, Agiao, Alano, Alba, Albano, Almario Chino Miguel, Almario Dennis, Almonte, Alvarez Jose, Alvarez Mercedes, Amante, Amatong, Ang, Angara, Angelis, Aquino, Aquino Magsaysay, Arbison Munier, Arbison Munier Jr., Arenas, Arrogansha, Asistio, Atide, Omentado, Ayol, Bagao, Balindong, Banyas Nogrades, Bancoro, Barba, Barbers, Baronda, Barzaga, Basgog, Bautista Claude, Bautista Johan Munich, Bautista Lim, Beltran, Benitez Alfredo, Benitez Javier Miguel, Bernos Ching, Bernos JB, Biron, Bocobo, Bolilia, Bondo, Priones, Bulut Megtang, Kagas, Calderon, Kalixto, Kawagdan, Kari, Castro, Kaiton, Celeste, Sendanya, Seniza, Chan, Chua, Chuatay, Tunggalaw, Ko, Popilar, Kohuangko Jaime Eduardo Mart, Kohuangko Mart, Coliantes, Corvera, Cruz Agatha, Cruz Ricardo, Cruzado, Kuwa, Tagoo, Talok, Dayanghirang, Taza, De Jesus, De Lima, De Venesia, Defensor, Tegamo, Delmar, De Los Santos, Di Makuha, Di Magila, Di Maporo Imelda, Di Maporo City Amina, Diokno, Dionisio, Domingo, Domogan, Duterte Harold James, Duterte Omar Vincent, Duterte Paolo, Di Fostino, Di Fostino Michael Carlos, Di Ian Paul, Elago, Emano, Inverga, Erise, Escudero, Espares, Espina, Estrelia, Ferrer Antonio, Ferrer Jeffrey, Flores, Fortez, Frasco, Presnedic, Fuentebelia, Galang, Galeios, Garbin, Garcia Albert, Garcia Dante, Garcia Jose Arturo, Garcia Karen Hope, Garcia Maria Angela, Gardiola, Garin, Gachalian, Gato, Klepa, Ko, Gomez, Gonzalez Alexandra, Gonzalez Alisa Micaela, Gonzalez Christopher Sheen, Gonzalez Roy, Galiseta, Guico, Quinto, Gulyas, Gutierrez, Hernandez Charizan, Hernandez Dennis, Hernandez Ferdinand, Hernandez Ramil, Hofer Hasim, Horibata, Ismula, Iway, Javier, Ko Antonio, Ko Elisa, Ko Wilton, Konghun, Ko, Labad Labad, Lakson, Lagbas, Lagdameyo Jose Manuel, Lagdameyo Monique Yasmin Maria, Lagman, Lagon Daphne, Lagon Sunny, Lara, Lazatin, Lidesma, Legasyon, Legarda, Ligaspi, Leviste, Libanan, Lopez, Gloria, Loyola, Luistro, Lumayag, Makapagal Arroyo, Makasait, Maceda, Madrona, Malapitan, Mangudadato, Manikiz, Maranyon, Marcoleta, Marcos, Marquez, Mastura, Matibag, Matugas, Mendoza, Mercado, Mercado Revilia, Mira Flores, Momo, Montez, Nava, Nazal, Nisay, Nolasco, Uwaminal Henry, Uwaminal Sancho Fernando, Odukado, Olivares, Ong Chuan, Ordanes, Oreta, Ortega, Uano Dizon, Padiernos, Pandaligan, Pancho, Panotes, Pascual, Perez, Pimentel, Plaza, Plato, Po, Primicia Sagabas, Pumaren, Puno, Kimbo, Rama, Rekto, Rehensha, Remulia, Revilia Bryan, Revilia Ramondjolo, Ridon, Rivera, Robies, Rodriguez Yulojo, Rodriguez Maximo, Rodriguez Rufus, Roman, Romualdes Andrew Julian, Romualdes Ferdinand Martin, Romualdes Iada Marie, Romualdo, Romulo, Roque, Sagarbaria, Sakaluran, Salceda, Sali, Salvador, Salvasion, Salvame, San Fernando, Santos Maria Alana Samantha, Santos Marc Anthony, Shimura, Singson Richel, Singson Ronald, Singson Mihan, Solon, Suwan, Swansing Bella Vanessa, Swansing Micaela Angela, Suarez, Suntay, Talyado, Tan Ayman, Tan Joseph, Tan Keith Micah, Tan Reynolds Michael, Tan Samir, Tan Stephen James, Tan Chi, Tan Huatko, Tariela, Teodoro, Tereng, Teres, Yango, Tien, Tino, Tolentino, Tuwan, Tulfo Jocelyn, Tulfo Ralph Wendell, Tupas, Totor, Ti, Ummali, Ungab, Uy de Carlo, Uy Roberto, Valeriano, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Veloso, Veloso Tuazon, Vergara, Villia, Villia Forte Miguel Luis, Villia Forte Vincenso Renato Luigi, Villia Nueva, Villia Rica, Violago, Yamsuwan, Yap Arthur, Yap Christoperson, Yap Edvik, Yap Eric, Yap John Gisnell, Yatko, Inarez, Yu Jiesel Victoria, Yu Joseph Kim, Yulo, Zamora Maria Harmet, Zamora Isabel Maria, Zubiri. Mr. Speaker, the roll call shows that 256 members responded to the call.
Maraming salamat, Secretary General. With 256, 256 members responding to the call, the Chair declares the presence of quorum. Majority Leader, please.
Mr. Speaker, I move to defer the reading and approval of the Journal of the Previous Session.
Kindly repeat the...
Mr. Speaker, I move to defer the reading and approval of the Journal of the Previous Session.
There's a motion to defer the reading of the Journal? The reading of the Journal? The reading? Session suspended. The reading... Majority Leader, please repeat the motion. Thank you. Session resumed. Majority Leader, please repeat the motion, please.
Mr. Speaker, I move to defer the reading and approval of the Journal of the Previous Session.
There's a motion to defer the reading and the approval of the... As stated, any objection? The Chair here is none. Motion is approved. Majority Leader, please.
Mr. Speaker, I move to proceed with the reference of business and request that the Secretary General be directed to read the titles of bills and resolutions on first reading as well as communications and committee reports.
Maraming salamat, Majority Leader. Is there an objection? The Chair here is none. The Secretary General is directed to read the titles of the bills and resolutions on first reading as well as messages, communications, and committee reports for referral to the appropriate committees. Secretary General?
Reference of business. Bills on first reading. House Bill 6346: Institutionalizing Green Infrastructure and Nature-Based Solutions for Sustainable and Resilient National Development by Representative Benitez Javier Miguel.
To the Committee on Economic Affairs.
House Bill 6347: Further Strengthening the Anti-Money Laundering Council by Representative Salceda.
To the Committee on Banks and Financial Intermediaries.
House Bill 6348: Requiring all public and private establishments in the Philippines to provide prayer rooms for Muslims by Representative Mangudadato.
To the Committee on Muslim Affairs.
House Bill 6349: Mandating the Filipos to adopt a Modernized Zone Improvement Plan Code System by Representative Chua.
To the Committee on Government and Prices and Privatization.
House Bill 6350: Renewing for 50 years the franchise granted to Cebu Air Inc. Doing Business Under the Name and Style of Cebu Pacific by Representatives Rodriguez Rufus and Rodriguez Maximo.
To the Committee on Legislative Franchises.
House Bill 6351: Renewing for 50 years the franchise granted to Sea Air Inc., now SebGo Inc. Doing Business Under the Name and Style of SebGo and Air Swift by Representatives Rodriguez Rufus and Rodriguez Maximo.
To the Committee on Legislative Franchises.
House Bill 6352: Expanding the grounds for dissolution of marriage by Representatives Ismula, Diokno, Sendanya, and Bagao.
To the Committee on Population and Family Relations.
House Bill 6353: Integrating Basic Financial Literacy as a Core Subject in the Junior and Senior High School Curricula and as an Integrated Component of the K-12 Program by Representatives Uwaminal Henry and Uwaminal Sancho Fernando.
To the Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill 6354: Establishing the National Framework for Water Resource Management by Representatives Tulfo Ralph Wendell and Tulfo Jocelyn.
To the Committee on Public Works and Highways and Committee on Government Reorganization.
House Bill 6355: Amending the Universal Health Care Act for the Purpose of Exempting OFWs from being mandated as direct contributors to make premium payments by Representatives De Lima, Bagao, and Lagman.
To the Committee on Officers' Workers Affairs.
House Bill 6356: Providing for a National Policy in Preventing Adolescent Pregnancies by Representative De Lima.
To the Committee on Youth and Sports Development.
House Bill 6357: Providing Free Tuition and Waiver of Other Fees to All Public and Private Elementary and Secondary School Teachers Enrolled in Postgraduate Studies in Education in State Colleges and Universities by Representative Yap Christoperson.
To the Committee on Higher and Technical Education.
House Bill 6358: Creating the Health Emergency Auxiliary Reinforcement Team under the DOH by Representative Yap Christoperson.
To the Committee on Health.
House Bill 6359: Lowering the Optional Retirement Age of Government Workers from 60 years to 57 years by Representative Yap Christoperson.
To the Committee on Government Enterprises and Privatization.
House Bill 6360: Strengthening the Mental Health Services of SUCs by Representative Yap Christoperson.
To the Committee on Higher and Technical Education.
House Bill 6391: 6361: Expanding the Services of the PCIC in Encouraging Private Sector Participation in Agricultural Insurance by Representative Yap Christoperson.
To the Committee on Government Enterprises and Privatization.
House Bill 6362: Creating the Philippine Airports Corporation by Representative Yap Christoperson.
To the Committee on Government and Prices Privatization and Committee on Transportation.
House Bill 6363: Establishing the Philippine Entrepreneurs Academy by Representative Yap Christoperson.
To the Committee on Higher and Technical Education.
House Bill 6364: Providing for the Revised Cooperative Code of the Philippines by Representative Yap Christoperson.
To the Committee on Cooperative Development.
House Bill 6365: Establishing the Second District of Southern Lede Congressional Library and Museum in Sogo, Southern Lede by Representative Yap Christoperson.
To the Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill 6366: Transferring the National Fire Training Institute from the Philippine Public Safety College to the BFP by Representative Chua.
To the Committee on Public Order and Safety.
House Bill 6367: Promoting a world of work free from violence and harassment by Representative Mendoza.
To the Committee on Women and Gender Equality.
House Bill 6368: Establishing the Kalepa Protected Landscape and Seascape by Representative Swansing Bella Vanessa.
To the Committee on Natural Resources.
House Bill 6369: Amending Sections 4 and 12 of the FAR Code of the Philippines of 2008 by Representative Cruzado.
To the Committee on Public Order and Safety.
House Bill 6370: Declaring November 11 of every year a special non-working holiday in Santa Barbara Iloilo to commemorate the General Martin T. Delgado Day by Representative Goriseta.
To the Committee on Local Government.
House Bill 6371: Creating the Department of Disaster Resilience by Representative Ligaspi.
To the Committee on Disaster Resilience and Committee on Government Reorganization.
House Bill 6372: Increasing the Bed Capacity of the Governor Celestino Galiare's Memorial Medical Center in Tagbilaran City, Bohol, from 525 beds to 1,000 beds by Representative Yap John Gisnell.
To the Committee on Health.
House Bill 6373: Providing for Free Freight Services in the Transportation of Free-Lift Goods to Calamity-Stricken Areas by Representative Lara.
To the Committee on Disaster Resilience.
House Bill 6374: Providing for the Establishment and Construction of a Disaster Food Bank in Stockpile in every province and highly urbanized city in the Philippines by Representative Lara.
To the Committee on Disaster Resilience.
House Bill 6375: Enhancing the Continuing Professional Development of Filipino Professionals as an Integral Component of Career Progression and Specialization Programs by Representative Alvarez Mercedes.
To the Committee on Higher and Technical Education and Committee on Civil Service and Professional Regulations.
House Bill 6376: Establishing the Philippine Environmental Assessment System by Representative Omentado.
To the Committee on Ecology.
House Bill 6377: Increasing the Salary Grade Entry of Medical Technologists from Salary Grade 11 to Salary Grade 15 in Government Service by Representative Omentado.
To the Committee on Appropriations.
Resolutions. House Resolution 515: Calling for an Urgent Investigation into the Claims of Former House Committee on Appropriations Chairperson Elizalde Ko and Former DPWH Under-Secretary Roberto Bernardo Regarding Insertions and Payment of Kickbacks in the 2025 National Budget Allegedly Ordered by President Ferdinand Marcos Jr. by Representatives Tino, Elago, and Ko.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 516: Directing the Committee on Climate Change to Conduct an Inquiry to Conduct an Inquiry on the Implementation of the Institutional Arrangement Mandated by the Climate Change Act of Two Thousand Nine Clarifying the Independence of the Climate Change Commission, by Representatives Rodriguez Ruffus and Tolentino.
To the Committee on Rules.
Communication. Letter dated November Nineteen, Two Thousand Twenty-Five of the Bank Officer Six, BSP Office of the General Counsel and Legal Services, Transmitting to the House of Representatives Duly Certified Copies of Certain BSP Issuances.
To the Committee on Banks and Financial Intermediaries.
Committee Reports. Committee Report Number Twenty-Five, Submitted by the Committee on Youth and Sports Development on House Resolution 523. Committee Report Number Twenty-Six, Submitted by the Committee on Higher and Technical Education on House Bill 6428. Committee Report Number Twenty-Seven, Submitted by the Committees on Basic Education and Culture and Higher and Technical Education on House Bill 6429.
The aforementioned committee reports are referred to the Committee on Rules. Thank you. Majority Leader, please.
Mr. Speaker, may we acknowledge the guests of the Honorable DMSR M. Sally of the Long District of Tawi-Tawi, there the barangay officials from Setangkay, Tawi-Tawi, barangay captain Rowen Akong Ahadja, Mr. Jamil Karil, and Mr. Glenn Ajarabi.
To the guests of Honorable DMSR M. Sally, Congressman, Long District of Tawi-Tawi, barangay officials of Setangkay, Tawi-Tawi. Welcome to the House of Representatives. Tampok sila. Ayon. Tukran. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, may we recognize the guests of Attorney Marlo Bangcoro, Representative of the First District of Zambuanga, Cibugay, the barangay captains from the municipalities of Payaw, Imelda, Buog, and Diplahan in the First District Province of Zambuanga, Cibugay, led by Mayor Joshua Mendoza of the municipality of Payaw.
Thank you, Majority Leader. To the guests of Attorney Marlo C. Bangcoro, Representative, First District of Zambuanga, Cibugay. On behalf of Speaker Martin Romaldes, maayong maayong hapon ka din yung tanan. Maayong pagabot. Tanan salamat. Majority Leader, please.
Mr. Speaker, may we recognize the guests of Honorable Congressman Nathaniel M. Odokado of Wantahanan Party List.
To the guests.
Mr. Speaker, we have the following guests with us today: Filipino Footwear Alliance Association Incorporated officers, which include Kobe Feliciano, Mia Santos, Lori Santos Vilasco, Marcos Babila, Gail Defista, Monica Edulanon, Imelda Fulgencio, Roger P. Junior, Martin Toroba, Florisila Budoso, and Ajy Jose of the Board of Trustees.
To the guests of Wantahanan Party List, Congressman, twenty-nine M. Odokado of the Filipino Footwear Alliance Association Incorporated. Good afternoon, magandang hapon. On behalf of Speaker Boje D. Faustino III, welcome to the House of Representatives. Majority Leader, please.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize the guests of the Honorable Villarica from the Fourth District of Bulakan. They are the following: City Mayor of Maykawayan, the Honorable Attorney Henry R. Villarica, and the former Maykawayan City Councilor Mario Barboso. Other guests include members from the Soroptimist International Santonino Chapter headed by President Nancy F. Porugan, and the following members: Evangeline E. Santos, Renee C. Locayon, Erlinda R. Marutani, and another branch of the Soroptimist International Maykawayan headed by President Rosemary Trangia and its members: Teresa Silva, Erlinda Magnyon, Corazon Pedro, Maria Teresa Avedano, Maria Lilibeth Lim, Maria Teresa Villarico, Luz Villafanya, Telma Esterban, Sanita Balilo, Maria Luisa S. Planada, Mary Ann de Castro, and Glisaria Castro. Mr. Speaker.
Tanan salamat, madami salamat, Majority Leader. To the guests of Congressman Lina Bell Ruth R. Villarica, Fourth District of Bulakan, magandang magandang hapon. On behalf of Speaker Faustino D. III, welcome to the House of Representatives. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move... Mr. Speaker, I move that we suspend session for a few moments.
Session suspended. Session resumed. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we consider additional reference of business.
The Secretary General is therefore directed. Please proceed.
Additional reference of business. Committee report. Committee Report Number Twenty-Eight, submitted by the Committee on Ethics and Privileges.
To the Committee on Rules. Majority Leader, please.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we suspend session for a few moments.
Session suspended.
Yes, dinan? Yes, yes, yes.
Session resume. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move to consider Committee Report Number Twenty Eight submitted by the Committee on Ethics and Privileges. And for this purpose, may I direct the Secretary General to read the title of the committee report.
There is a motion to consider Committee Report Number Twenty Eight submitted by the Committee on Ethics and Privileges. Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved. Secretary General is directed to read the title of the committee report.
Committee Report Number Twenty Eight on Committee Case Number S C Two Zero Two Five dash zero three on the matter of Representative Francisco Kiko A. Barzaga, Fourth District of Cavite.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move to recognize the Chairperson of the Committee on Ethics and Privileges, Representative J C M. Abalos.
Honorable J C Abalos is hereby recognized.
Mr. Speaker, on September twenty nine, twenty twenty five, the Committee on Ethics and Privileges, upon a unanimous vote of all members present, there being quorum, acquired jurisdiction over the verified complaint docketed as Committee Case Number Three entitled Representative Ronaldo V. Puno et al versus Representative Francisco Kiko A. Barzaga of the Fourth District of Cavite per violation of Section One Hundred Forty One A Rule Twenty of the Rules of House of Representatives on the Code of Conduct, Section Four C of Republic Act Sixty Seven Thirteen or the Code of Conduct and Ethical Standards for Public Officials and Employees, Article One Hundred Forty Two of the Revised Penal Code, and conduct prejudicial to the best interest of the service. It likewise determined the sufficiency in form and content of the sworn complaint. Hence, pursuant to Section Two E Rule One of the Rules of Procedure of the Committee, the Committee has considered the sworn complaint, and the Committee has the honor to inform the House of its findings and recommendations. Mr. Speaker, the Committee on Ethics and Privileges Secretariat received on September seventeen, twenty twenty five, a verified complaint dated September sixteen, twenty twenty five against Representative Francisco Kiko A. Barzaga of the Fourth District of Cavite for alleged violation of Section One Forty One Eight of the Rules of the House, Republic Act Sixty Seven Thirteen otherwise known as the Code of Conduct, Section One Hundred Forty Two of the Revised Penal Code, and conduct prejudicial to the best interest of the service. The complaint has twenty five pages, including the verification and a certification of non-forum shopping. It was signed and filed by twenty nine complainants, namely Representatives Ronaldo V. Puno, Jeffrey P. Ferrer, Ronaldo M. Valeriano, Brian S. Yamsoan, Nico Raúl S. Data, Christopher Sheen P. González, Agostina Dominic C. Pancho, John Gesnil L. Yap the Second, Rosalí A. Salvame, Alexandria P. González, Antonio A. Ferrer, Sun J. Shimura, Alfredo D. Marañón the Third, Lawrence R. Defensor, Dimzar M. Salí, Miguel Luis R. Villafuerte, Vicentro Renato Luigi R. Villafuerte, Franz S. Pumarin, Karen Hope Flores García, Maria Angela S. García, Antolin A. Oreta the Third, Carlos A. Loria, Crispín Diego D. Remulia, Romeo M. Acop, Alphelito M. Bascog, Jerry Evangelisto Pérez, Adrian J. C. Advincula, Edibong G. Plaza, and Jennifer Karen A. Legbas. These all twenty nine complainants are members coming from the National Unity Party, a registered political party in the Philippines. The complaint alleged that on eleven and twelve of September twenty twenty five, respondent violated and continued to violate by means of his official social media platforms the established standards of conduct for members of House of Representatives. The respondent posted statements on his verified Facebook pages, Congressman Kiko Barzaga and Kiko Barzaga official, scurrilous attacks against government institutions and officials, which constitute conduct on becoming of a member of Congress. The complainants alleged that these social media posts in his verified Facebook pages contain language and imagery that employ derogatory and inflammatory rhetoric against government institutions, use vulgar and inappropriate language on befitting a public official, promote divisiveness, and undermine public confidence in government, and violate standards of decorum expected of members of Congress. The screenshots of the said posts constituting twenty four pictures found in said social media pages were included as annexes by the complainants in their verified complaint, which later marked as their exhibits. Complainants admitted that while some of the posts were posted prior to Representative Barzaga's assumption as a House member, the crude and considerably lewd pictures remain posted and publicly visible despite his election as a district representative, which now bear the congressional title Congressman Kiko Barzaga. Complainants alleged that by allowing the pictures and what it depicts to remain public on his social media accounts, Representative Barzaga effectively republished the materials as part of his current conduct as a House member in the present Congress. The public posts have been reshared multiple times, thus placing the government and its officials in ridicule and rendered them objects of public mockery. The complainants alleged further that the totality of the conduct of Representative Barzaga constitute four causes of action. Number one, violation of Section One Forty One A Rule Twenty of the House Rules. Two, violation of Section Four C of Republic Act Sixty Seven Thirteen otherwise known as the Code of Conduct and Ethical Standards of Public Officials and Employees. Three, violation of Article One Hundred Forty Two of the Revised Penal Code. And four, conduct on becoming of a member of the House and prejudicial to the best interest of the service. Complainants sought that the committee find Representative Barzaga guilty of violating Rule Twenty of the House Rules of Represen- House of Representatives and Republic Act Sixty Seven Thirteen, and impose upon him appropriate sanctions as may be provided by law and the House rules. Complainants likewise sought that the committee direct the respondent to refrain from similar conduct in the future. Mr. Speaker, on October seven, twenty twenty five, respondent Representative Barzaga filed his answer to the verified complaint. Respondent denied all allegations and sought the dismissal of the complaint. His core defense is that the question Facebook posts constitute protected political speech made in good faith as part of legitimate public discourse. He further contended that the posts merely constitute expressions of opinion of matters of public concern that is protected under Article Three, Section Four of the Nineteen Eighty Seven Constitution and are part of the legitimate exercise of a legislator's oversight and representative functions. He argued that none of the cited acts rise to the level of ethical misconduct, sedition, or conduct on becoming of a House member or even prejudicial to the best interest of the service. He further stated that there is no substantial evidence to support the allegations which are mere mischaracterization of the respondent's action. Committee deliberations: determination of jurisdiction and substantial compliance with form and content of the complaint. Mr. Speaker, in an executive session on September twenty nine, twenty twenty five, the Committee held its initial deliberation on the sworn complaint, and by a unanimous vote of all the members present, the Committee acquired jurisdiction over the subject matter and determined that the sworn complaint substantially complied with the requirements of Section Twenty Four on form and content of a sworn complaint. Thereafter, the Committee sent a transmittal notice containing the formal charges to Representative Barzaga, furnishing him a copy of the sworn complaint and the Committee Rules of Procedure. The Committee directed respondent to file his response within ten calendar days from receipt thereof, furnishing copies to the complainants. Initial review and attempt at conciliation. Mr. Speaker, during the conduct of the initial review on the case during the second regular meeting of the Committee on October thirteen, complainant Deputy Speaker Puno and on behalf of the other twenty nine complainants presented their case before the Committee citing the case hinges on four causes of action and that the evidence for the causes presented were already included in the complaint. On the part of the respondent Barzaga, his counsel attorney Villia stated that the respondent will not be making any more statement other than those mentioned in the respondent's answer. The respondent came in late during this meeting and was able to arrive only after his case. Thereafter, the Committee decided to create a subcommittee on conciliation composed of five members, three from the majority and two members from the minority, namely Representative Domogan as Presiding Officer, Chairperson, Representative Tanwatko, Representative García. For the minority, Representative Chel Jokno and Senior Deputy Minority Leader Egay Erise. In the special meeting of the Committee on Ethics held on November nineteen, twenty twenty five, Representative Domogan, the Presiding Officer of the Subcommittee on Conciliation, reported that only the complainants submitted their manifestation of unwillingness to undergo conciliation. On the other hand, respondent did not submit any written manifestation and instead verbally relayed his unwillingness to enter into conciliation. During the meeting, the respondent did not further comment on the matter. Instead, when approached by the members, respondent signified his unwillingness. Representative Domogan then considered the conciliation terminated and closed. Thus, the Committee terminated the conciliation proceeding and decided to continue with the initial review of the case. During the deliberation, the pleadings submitted were considered pieces of evidence on record by the parties as follows. For the complainants, verified complaint of the complain- complainants dated September sixteen, twenty twenty five, including twenty four annexes. Number two, complainant's reply to respondent's answer dated October six, twenty twenty five. Number three, manifestation dated November six, twenty twenty five. For the respondent, he provided an answer to the verified complaint dated October six, twenty twenty five with one annex. There being no additional submissions from the parties, the Committee terminated the initial review on the case and decided to proceed with the formal adjudicatory hearing on the alleged improper conduct or violation committed by the respondent on the basis of Section Thirty One A Paragraph Three Rule Six of the Committee Rules, which provides that further committee action is appropriate because the alleged improper conduct or violation is within the jurisdiction of the Committee, and there is reason to believe that the alleged improper conduct or violation may have occurred. The Committee set the formal adjudicatory hearing on November twenty four, twenty twenty five, where the Chairperson directed the parties to submit to the Committee the documents enumerated in Section Forty B of the Committee Rules on or before the scheduled adjudicatory hearing. The parties were notified of the schedule in open hearing. Mr. Speaker, the Committee conducted the adjudicatory hearing on November twenty four. Present during the hearing were complainant representatives Daza, Pumarin, Pérez, Valeriano, Remulia, Legbas, Ferrer, Oreta the Third, Loria, and councils attorney Lobo and attorney Lo. However, both respondent Representative Barzaga and his counsel were not present and instead filed an urgent motion for postponement only minutes prior to the hearing. The motion for postponement was denied by the Committee after due deliberations. In addition, the Chairperson pursuant to Section Forty F of the Committee Rules ruled to deny the motion of Representative Barzaga in his manifestation and motion dated November twenty 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 five to call Representative Advincula as one of the one of the complainants as his witness on the ground of irrelevancy to the subject matter of the case. Upon the commencement of the formal hearing, complainants through counsel attorney Lobo manifested that they will not be submitting additional evidence for the complainants and will adopt the verified complaint, reply, and manifestation as their exhibits. The complainant had their exhibits marked accordingly as follows. Exhibit A, verified complaint dated September sixteen, twenty twenty five. Exhibits A one to A twenty four, social media posts of Representative Barzaga with their respective links. Exhibit B, reply to respondent's answer dated October six, twenty twenty five. Exhibit C, manifestation dated November six, twenty twenty five. Mr. Speaker, the Committee resolved to set the continuation of the adjudicatory hearing on the case Wednesday in November twenty six, twenty twenty five with notice to respondent Barzaga that he should personally appear with or without counsel, with stern warning that failure to appear will result to a waiver of his right to cross-examine the complainants and for the Committee to have its final determination under Section Forty One Rule Seven of the Committee Rules of Procedure. Thereafter, Mr. Speaker, the Chairperson issued an order directing both parties and their respective councils to be present in the continuation of the adjudicatory hearing set on November twenty six. On November twenty six, the Committee continued its adjudicatory hearing on the case through special meeting. Complainant representatives Valeriano, Valeriano, Daza, Oreta the Third, and their councils attorneys Lobo and Marisigan, and the respondent Representative Barzaga and his counsel attorney Villia were present. The Committee approved the prayer of the manifestation and motion of the complainants to limit the number of their witnesses to be presented for cross-examination by the respondent to Rep. Daza and Valeriano. The complainants presented each of the twenty four subject social media posts alleged in the complaint and explained to which particular causes of action each post pertained. Respondent Barzaga and his counsel conducted the cross-examination to witness Representative Daza. However, since both respondent and his counsel have been conducting cross-examination alternatively, upon motion by Representative Jokno, Julie seconded, the Committee decided that only the counsel of Representative Barzaga should conduct the cross-examination of Representative Valeriano. The complainants waived their right to conduct redirect examination and instead both parties were given their respective final statements. After which, representatives de Lima, Acosta, Abalos, Abante, and Guerin pro rounded clarificatory questions directly to respondent Representative Barzaga. The Committee then terminated the formal adjudicatory hearing. After exhaustive deliberation on the matter and with the adjudicatory hearing having been terminated, upon a unanimous vote of all the members present, there being a quorum, the Committee has conducted concluded that a violation of law, rule, or regulation of the House relating to the conduct of the House member within the jurisdiction of the Committee has occurred. The Committee found that there is substantial evidence and that the violation has been proven warranting imposition of one of the disciplinary actions listed in Paragraph B of Section Fifty Two pursuant to Section Forty One Set- Rule Seven of the Committee Rules. On December one, twenty twenty five, Mr. Speaker, the Committee in executive session unanimously approved the graph- the draft committee report containing its exhaustive report on the deliberations conducted, its findings and conclusions on the arguments raised by both parties, and its recommendations to the House of Representatives with amendments subject to form and style. Mr. Speaker, the sole issue to be resolved is whether or not Representative Kiko Barzaga committed any acts of misconduct that constitutes disorderly behavior which may reflect upon the House of Representatives when he posted, retained, and failed to remove the subject social media posts in his Facebook accounts. The co- Mr. Speaker, the Committee is bereft of jurisdiction to determine criminal culpability under Article One Hundred Forty Two of the Revised Penal Code inciting to sedition. It's the Article One Hundred Forty Two inciting to sedition. The penalty of prison correctional in its maximum period and the fine of not exceeding two thousand pesos shall be imposed upon any person who, without taking any direct part in the crime of sedition, should incite others to the accomplishment of any of the acts which constitute sedition by means of speeches, proclamations, writings, emblems, cartoons, banners, or other representations tending to the same end. In their complaint, Mr. Speaker, complainants admitted that while they are not filing a criminal complaint, the sedition-like character of subject social media posts invites dissatisfaction and arguably stokes violence and uprising, weakens the confidence of the public in lawful authorities, and aggravates the misconduct complained of. Such posts contain scurrilous libels against the government and may incite disaffection of the public and may erode loyalty to lawful authorities. Additionally, Mr. Speaker, the language used equates the government to authoritarianism or dictatorship which can undermine public confidence. For his part, Mr. Speaker, respondent argued that Article One Hundred Forty Two do not constitute seditious behavior nor did they evince any intent to undermine lawful authority. On the contrary, respondent stated that the posts were made in good faith and in the legitimate exercise of his duty as a public official, being a legislator to promote transparency, accountability, and civic awareness. He added that far from inciting disaffection of the public and may erode loyalty to lawful authorities. He added that far from inciting discontent, the posts actually encourage informed discourse and responsible citizenship. Mr. Speaker, the committee resolves not to belabor discussion on this matter since the committee, being an administrative body, is bereft of jurisdiction to determine possible criminal culpability, if any, of the respondent on the statements posted in his social media accounts. Allegations of inciting to sedition should be proven beyond reasonable doubt in an appropriate judicial proceeding. Nonetheless, Mr. Speaker, this committee is firm that while the acts alleged may be denominated as criminal offenses, the committee is not divested of its duty under the Constitution and the rules of the House of Representatives to recommend disciplinary action if the acts likewise constitute misconduct, disorderly behavior, or violation of the House rules. This is especially true if the misconduct reflects upon the dignity, integrity, and reputation of the House of Representatives. Mr. Speaker, the House of Representatives has the power to discipline its members. The Constitution provides the power of the House of Representatives to punish its members for disorderly behavior and other contempt of its authority, as well as the power to suspend or expel a member for any cause which renders a member unfit to continue to occupy one of its seats. Section sixteen, Paragraph three, Article six of the nineteen eighty-seven Constitution provides, "Each House may determine the rules of proceedings, punish its members for disorderly behavior, and, with the concurrence of two-thirds of all its members, suspend or expel a member. A penalty of suspension when imposed shall not exceed sixty days." Mr. Speaker, the power to discipline is a power of protection and the Legislative House is given the power to protect itself by the punishment of a member according to one of the works of Hector de León citing Cooley's "Atreaties on Constitutional Limitations", "A member who may be physically, mentally, or morally wholly unfit. He may be affected with a contagious disease, or insane, or noisy, violent, and disorderly, or in the habit of using profane, obscene, and abusive language." Mr. Speaker, Sections one four one and one four two of Rule twenty of Rules of the House of Representatives and the Twentieth Congress implement this legislative power of discipline. While there are expressed constitutional limitations on the power to discipline, namely, number one, the only ground under which the House may discipline a member is for disorderly behavior. Number two, the House may impose the penalty of suspension or expulsion only with concurrence of two-thirds of all its members. And three, the penalty of suspension when imposed shall not exceed the period of sixty days. These limitations refer to the manner of exercise of the power to discipline. Mr. Speaker, there is no qualification in the constitutional legislative power to discipline that disorderly behavior must be related to official conduct or must be committed within the halls of Congress or in pursuance of legislative functions or in the course of legislative proceedings or activities. Mr. Speaker, the House of Representatives is the sole judge of what constitutes disorderly behavior. It is settled that the House of Representatives is the sole judge of what constitutes disorderly behavior, not only because the Constitution has conferred jurisdiction upon it, but also because the matter depends mainly on factual circumstances of which the House is in better position to determine and for which cannot be depicted by black and white for presentation to and adjudication by the courts. What constitutes disorderly behavior as a ground for disciplinary action is conceivably beyond the reach of the courts. While the Constitution is not explicit as to what constitutes disorderly behavior, jurisprudence dictates that the same is left at the sound discretion of the legislative body. In the case of Osmania versus Pendatum, the High Court ruled that while parliamentary immunity guarantees the legislator complete freedom of expression without fear of being made responsible in criminal or civil actions before the courts or any other forum outside the congressional hall, however, it does not protect him from responsibility before the legislative body itself whenever his words and conduct are considered by the latter disorderly or unbecoming a member thereof. Respondent violated Section one four one A, Rule twenty, Code of Conduct of the Rules of the House of Representatives. Mr. Speaker, complainants alleged that respondent's act of posting disparaging content against the government and its institutions in a public sphere brings disrepute not only upon the respondent himself, but also to the entire institution. Complainants alleged the offensive posts constitute public misconduct, not private speech, because these were made through his official social media Facebook pages and that the subject posts drag the House in disrepute, tarnish the institution's reputation, and undermine public trust. His continued publication of lewd and inflammatory content under the social media Facebook account Congressman Kiko Barsaga is a continuing ethical breach. Respondent, on the other hand, Mr. Speaker, alleged that Section one four one, Rule twenty of the House Rules provides a general ethical guideline and is inherently subjective and must be interpreted in light of the constitutional guarantee of free speech under Article two, Section four of the nineteen eighty-seven Constitution. He argued that the posts are not part of legitimate exercise of a legislator's that the posts are part of legitimate exercise of a legislator's oversight and representative functions. He added that there is no indication that the statements made online were made with malice, nor is there evidence that they were false or made with reckless disregard for the truth. Mere criticism of government or its institutions, even if harsh, does not automatically equate conduct that reflects discredit on the House, absent clear proof of bad faith or intent to undermine the institution. Mr. Speaker, respondent repeatedly raised that the subject social media posts are made in exercise of his right to free speech and constitute expressions of opinion on matters of public concern. Freedom of speech and expression is not absolute. It cannot be invoked in a proceeding before the Committee on Ethics and Privileges whose jurisdiction is to scrutinize a member's conduct, especially so that the tool being used is by the nature of cybercommunications like social media posts and Facebook, which has particularity on its speedy and wide-scale character. It is not a license, Mr. Speaker, to harm or defame others or to violate other rights. Mr. Speaker, if every member would invoke their right to free speech in every instance where an improper conduct is being investigated, there would be no instance when a member can ever be held accountable or liable. Although members of the House of Representatives are given a wide latitude in expressing their views on matters of public concern, they remain responsible to the House whenever they go beyond the threshold of conduct that is befitting for a congressman. Intemperate, distasteful, and incendiary language or conduct even those uttered or committed outside the halls of Congress that tend to reflect discredit on the House and undermine its integrity are subject to the disciplinary authority of the committee and the House of Representatives. Section one hundred forty-one A, Rule twenty of the House of Representatives Rules. Section one forty-one, Code of Conduct. There is hereby established in the House the following Code of Conduct. A, a member shall act at all times in a manner that shall reflect creditably on the House. Section one four one A obliges each member of the House of Representatives to act in a certain manner that conveys the honor and the dignity of the institution. Mr. Speaker, this ethical guideline directs members to conduct themselves with due regard to the respect and authority given to the House of Representatives as a body of esteemed representatives of the people. The inclusion of the phrase "at all times" signify that the conduct should not only pertain to a member's public life, but also his private life. Mr. Speaker, at the outset, it should be noted that the respondent in his answer did not deny ownership of the subject social media posts. In his testimony, Mr. Speaker, while he denied having exclusive control over Facebook accounts Congressman Kiko Barsaga and Kiko Barsaga, he disclosed and affirmed that the subject social media content were posted and published by his page editor under his instruction and approval. Attached to this committee report, Mr. Speaker, are the minutes of the said adjudicatory hearing. Mr. Speaker, respondent likewise confirmed that save in instances of miscommunication between him and his staff, all of the social media content he posts is with consent. This is likewise reflected in the minutes of our adjudicatory hearing, Mr. Speaker. With these, the committee considered the respondent to have a direct involvement and participation in posting and publishing these photos and content. Consequently, the committee had to look each of the subject social media posts alleged in the complaint to determine whether or not in posting these content, respondent Barsaga committed any acts of misconduct or unparliamentary conduct which may reflect upon the House of Representatives or to the discredit of the same. Mr. Speaker, we find basis in the allegations of the complainants. The committee finds the subject social media posts of the respondent to be inflammatory and with a tendency to unjustifiably incite public distrust with the government and the House of Representatives. Specifically, the committee finds the following social media posts to be violative of Section one four one A, Rule twenty of the Rules of the House of Representatives. Exhibit A two, exhibit A three, exhibit A four, exhibit A five, A six, A nine, A eleven, and A fourteen. Copies of these exhibits were distributed to each of the members. Mr. Speaker, the subject posts are not mere criticisms of the government, but reckless, unsubstantiated, offensive, general insinuations against public institutions and public officials that undermine the people's confidence in the government. The respondent argued that elected officials should be given wide latitude in expressing their views, even if critical of government policies. Mr. Speaker, political criticism, if made without basis, is simply heckling. In this case, respondent's conduct and remarks in his posts are not harsh criticisms against the government, but were made with malice, tending to insult and tarnish image of the House of Representatives as an institution. We do not find respondent's blatant use of language suggestive we do not find respondent's blatant use of language suggestive of violence, public disorder, and turmoil to be sensible and intelligent political expressions one would expect from an elected legislator. The subject social media Facebook posts do not only suggest expressions of dissatisfaction to the government, but allusions promoting discord and tension among government institutions and leaders. Mr. Speaker, this committee shall not tolerate conduct that unjustifiably seeks to damage the reputation of the institution and undermine public confidence to government authorities in the guise of political expression. Expressions that include the meaning derogatory and denigrating language are not the kind of robust public discourse the House of Representatives should encourage among its ranks. Hence, the committee finds that the respondent had acted in a manner that tarnishes and damages the integrity of the House of Representatives and reflects negatively on the House members themselves. Contrary to Section one four one A of the Rules of the House of Representatives, a member of the House should always adhere to the Code of Conduct in the House of Representatives since this was adopted by the House members themselves. Mr. Speaker, when a representative assumes his office, the representative swore to faithfully discharge the best abilities, the duties of an elected representative and of all others that the representative may hereafter hold. A significant part of these duties is to uphold the rules of the House of Representatives. The committee finds that the respondent failed to discharge this sworn duty, not only to the institution, but also to the constituency that elected him to office. Mr. Speaker, respondent violated Section four C of Republic Act sixty-seven thirteen and committed acts on becoming of a member of the House of Representatives. Complainants alleged that some of the subject social media posts exhibit obscene and inappropriate language, undermining public trust. Likewise, complainants alleged that respondent violated norms of behavior for public officials by acting contrary to good morals, public order, and public interest. During the adjudicatory hearing, complainants likewise pointed to the statement issued by the Philippine Commission on Women condemning actions of the respondent which constitute a direct affront to the honor and dignity of women and a gross violation of Filipinos' trust. Section four of Republic Act sixty-seven thirteen mandates every public official to observe professionalism, justness, and sincerity, nationalism, and patriotism, and commitment to democracy. Section four C of R A sixty-seven thirteen provides norms of conduct of public officials and employees. A, every public official and employee shall observe the following as standards of personal conduct in the discharge and execution of official duties. C, justness and sincerity. Public officials and employees shall remain true to the people at all times. They must act with justness and sincerity and shall not discriminate against anyone, especially the poor and the underprivileged. They shall at all times respect the rights of others and shall refrain from doing acts contrary to law, good morals, good customs, public policy, public order, public safety, and public interest. Mr. Speaker, we have held that each member of the House of Representatives must not only be guided by the Code of Conduct, but also by the norms of conduct enunciated under R A sixty-seven thirteen or the Code of Conduct and ethical standards for public officials and employees. Members of Congress are, after all, public officials and should be held to the same standards of conduct as any public servant. In fact, Mr. Speaker, members of Congress should be given, should be even held to a higher standard of conduct because they are elected and represent a constituency. The respondent as a public official and an elected representative should be more circumspect in the use of social media posts, especially so when the account carries or bears his congressional title. In communicating and socializing through social media networks, respondent should bear in mind that when he communicates, regardless of whether it is a personal matter or part of his legislative duties, creates and contributes to the people's opinion, not just for himself, but of the entire House of Representatives. This is especially true when the posts are viewable not only by his family and close friends, but by acquaintances and the general public. When the respondent made and continued to make inflammatory posts in social media using his congressional title, he is not only representing his name and reputation, but also the name and reputation of the institution he is connected or associated with. Thus, when respondent showed these posts for public consumption, respondent placed himself in a situation where he and the status he holds as a House member may be the object of the public's criticism, ridicule, and mockery. Mr. Speaker, as a representative, he is expected to purport himself as a leader and a role model. A representative should carry himself or herself with the authority and the dignity of the position he assumed. A representative's language and conduct within and without the halls of Congress should carry the weight and significance of one who has been selected among many to represent the best interests of his constituency. The Constitution could have made it more explicit when it states in Section one, Article eleven, that public office is a public trust. Public officers and employees must, at all times, be accountable to the people, serve them, with utmost responsibility, integrity, loyalty, and efficiency, act with patriotism and justice, and lead modest lives. We have stated that an elective official is burdened with these considerable obligations because the position carries the distinction in society. Public service requires no less. The committee finds the respondent to have breached the standards of propriety, professionalism, and decency when he permitted to retain posts showing lewd content, degrading views towards women, and ostentatious display of wealth in his Facebook page. Specifically, the committee finds respondent to have violated the tenets of justice, sincerity, good morals, and good customs enunciated in Section four C of Republic Act sixty-seven thirteen by posting the following in his social media accounts. Exhibit A seven, A eight, A ten, A twelve, A thirteen, A fifteen, A sixteen to twenty-four. We agree with complainants that these are not conduct expected of a legislator. In addition, the committee finds respondent's act of retaining inappropriate posts, which admittedly were posted prior to assumption of his office in Congress, evinces deliberate and willful disregard of the institution's high standards and decorum and professionalism. As a legislator, he accepted the standards of conduct when he took an oath of his office as a member of the House of Representatives. The respondent cannot invoke his right to privacy as the social media posts are made public and are publicly accessible. These were made shareable and had been, in fact, shared multiple times. Following the principle in Vavares and Spouses Susara versus Saint Teresa's College et al, the respondent does not have reasonable expectation of privacy for subject social media posts because he has not manifested his intention to keep the post private or limited invisibility through the utilization of social media platforms' privacy tools. The fact that the subject social media posts were viewable by the public at the time the complaint was filed with the committee shows respondent's intent not to limit the subject social media post's visibility and accessibility. Hence, respondent Barsaga cannot invoke his right to informational privacy. In communicating and socializing through social media legislators, particularly House members, must bear in mind that what they communicate, regardless of whether it is a personal matter or part of his or her legislative duties, creates and contributes to the people's opinion, not just of the House member, but of the entire House of Representatives, of which he or she is a part. This is especially true when the posts of a House member are viewable not only by his or her family and close acquaintances, but also of the general public. In determining whether the social media posts by Representative Barsaga constitute disorderly behavior, this committee had to look whether these social media posts reflect positively on the image of the House of Representatives and its members, the statements reflect the dignity of his office as a representative of the people and his constituencies in Cavite, and the statements and social and the statements in social media posts reflect the values of the House of Representatives as an institution. The committee likewise took note of the statement of the Philippine Commission on Women condemning the scandalous behavior of the respondent and his disrespect of women's dignity. Ultimately, Mr. Speaker, based on these standards of conduct, the committee finds the social media posts in Facebook to be appropriated and unbefitting of a House member. Respondent's reckless, offensive, and irresponsible use of his social media platform tarnishes the name, integrity, and reputation of the House of Representatives. His deliberate choice to retain certain lewd, unprofessional, and inappropriate photos clearly shows bad faith. Respondent's conduct simply does not reflect the kind of principles and ideals the public expects of a public official, particularly a member of the House of Representatives. Mr. Speaker, after a thorough deliberation on the case, the committee finds that the actions of Rep. Barsaga in posting incendiary social media content through his Facebook accounts and in retaining and failing to remove publicly viewable inappropriate and indecent photos to be unparliamentary and unbecoming of a House member, taken in their entirety, the actions of Rep. Barsaga bring contempt, discredit, and disrepute to the name of the House of Representatives. His actions reflected negatively upon the dignity, integrity, and reputation of the House of Representatives as an institution of the members of the House individually and collectively. Consequently, the committee find - the committee finds respondent Representative Kiko Barsaga of the 4th District of Cavite guilty of disorderly behavior by violating Section 141A Rule 20 of the Rules of House of Representatives 4C of RA 6713 or the Code of Conduct and Ethical Standards for Public Officials and Employees, and by engaging conduct on becoming of a member of the House. And recommends the imposition of the penalty of 60-day suspension from office without the benefit of salaries and allowances during the period of suspension with a stern warning, that repetition of similar misconduct will result to a more severe disciplinary action. In addition, Mr. Speaker, the committee recommends that the respondent Barsaga be directed to remove all 24 social media posts subject of this case within 24 hours from adoption of this report in the plenary. Mr. Speaker, let this be a reminder to all the members of the House of Representatives that as trustees of the people, we are expected to conduct ourselves in a manner that would reflect the dignity of our position in society and in public service. Let us be more circumspect in our acts and words and be mindful of the high standards of propriety required of us as legislators. Maraming maraming salamat, Mr. Speaker.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I now move to adopt the findings and recommendations contained in Committee Report Number 28 and pursuant to our rules directed to Secretary General to read the title of the said measure and thereafter call the role of members for nominal voting. Mr. Speaker, may we recognize the Honorable Toby Chanko.
Honorable Toby Chanko is hereby recognized.
But before I speak, I think the Honorable Barsaga is standing up. So if he will have any manifestations, I will deal the floor to him.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, may we recognize Honorable Kiko Barsaga.
Honorable Kiko Barsaga is hereby recognized.
Okay, testing, testing. I wholeheartedly accept the decision of the committee, but I maintain my stance that President Marcos must be held accountable for his crimes. Too many people have died and too much money was plundered from the Filipino people for us to stand down now. Whatever punishment may fall upon me and others who stand against this president who has lost his constitutional mandate - uh, his constitutional mandate of serving the people is inconsequential in relation to the amounts of lives and futures that will be saved when President Marcos leaves Malacanyang.
Point of order, Mr. Speaker. Point of order, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, may we recognize Chairman Abalos for the point of order.
Mr. Speaker, point of order.
Uh, Honorable J.C. Barsaga is, uh, J.C.
Mr. Speaker, Mr. Speaker, may I be recognized? The respondent has already spoken. He has said that he has accepted the imposed penalty under the committee report. Therefore, I reiterate the motion to consider the adoption of the committee report and call the role of members for nominal voting.
Mr. Speaker, Mr. Speaker, I just yielded to the Honorable Barsaga. The floor is mine.
But, Mr. Speaker, I have a point of order.
Majority Leader.
What's the point of order, Mr. Speaker? May I know from the chairman?
Mr. Speaker, as sponsor of this resolution, I have not yet yielded my time to the respondent.
Majority Leader.
If the chairman so wishes, he has his time, Mr. Speaker.
Yes.
Honorable J.C. Abalos is hereby recognized.
Mr. Speaker, I would like to point out that as sponsor of this resolution, it is my time regarding this measure that we are deliberating right now. I would also like to put on record, Mr. Speaker, that the respondent has been given an opportunity to explain his defense at the proper forum, and we have accorded him that, Mr. Speaker. That is all, Mr. Speaker. Maraming salamat po.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, there is a pending motion to consider
Mr. Speaker, may I ask if the sponsor is willing to yield to a few questions?
Mr. Speaker, may I request suspension for a few minutes?
A minute suspension.
Mr. Speaker, may I reiterate my motion to call the role of members for nominal voting for adoption of the committee report?
There is a motion to adopt the finding-
Mr. Speaker, um, the honorable sponsor was willing to yield to a few questions.
Mr. Speaker, there's already a motion, and pursuant to our rules, Rule 1 to 1, the period of voting can no longer be interrupted by any motion or issue.
Mr. Speaker, the mo - the - the - the voting hasn't started yet, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, I do not hear the chairman yielding to any more questions. After the 27 pages of the committee report, Mr. Speaker, Honorable Chanko, let's allow the members to decide on a question of discipline, whether they agree to the committee report. If they agree, they will vote yes. If they do not agree, they will vote no. So let's hear the members and call the role of members.
Mr. Speaker, can we know from the - the chairman if he is willing to yield to a few questions or not? No? No, not willing to yield questions?
Mr. Speaker, I reiterate my motion to call the role of members for nominal voting immediately.
The Secret Secretary General is hereby directed to call the role of members for nominal voting. No more interruptions.
Role call of members on the adoption of the findings and recommendations contained in Committee Report Number 28 on Committee Case Number SC-2025-03 on the matter of Representative Francisco Kiko A. Barsaga, 4th District of Cavite. Abalos. Abante. Asidre. Acop. Acosta. Adyong. Adwinkula. Agarau. Agyaw. Alano. Alba. Albano. Almario Chino Miguel. Almario Dennis. Almonte. Alvarez Jose. Alvarez Mercedes. Amante. Amatong. Ang. Angara. Angeles. Aquino. Aquino Magcaysay. Arbison Munir. Arbison Munir Jr. Arenas. Arrogancia. Asistyo. Atide. Aumentado. Ion. Bagau. Balindong. Banyas Nograles. Bangcoro. Bangco. Barba. Barbers. Baronda. Barsaga. Baskug. Bautista Clode. Bautista Joan Monique. Bautista Lim. Beltran. Benitez Alfredo. Benitez Javier Miguel. Bernos Ching. Bernos JB. Biron. Bokobo. Bolilia. Bondok. Briones. Bulut Begtang. Kagas. Calderon. Kalixto. Kawagdan. Kari. Castro. Kaiton. Celeste. Sandanya. Seniza. Chan. Chua. Chua Tay. Chongalau. Ko. Ko Pilar. Kowanko Jaime Eduardo Marc. Kowanko Marc. Coliantes. Porvera. Cruz Agatha. Cruz Ricardo. Rosado. Kua. Dagoo. Dalog. Dayang Herang. Daza. De Jesus. De Lima. De Venetia. De Fensoar. Degamo. Del Mar. De Los Santos. Dimakuha. Dimagila. Dimaporo Imelda. Dimaporo Siti Amina. Diokno. Dionisio. Domingo. Domogan. Doterte Harold James. Doterte Omar Vincent. Doterte Paolo. Di Faustino. Di Faustino Michael Carlos. Di Ian Paul. Elago. Emano. Enverga. Erise. Escodero. Espares. Espina. Estrella. Ferrer Antonio. Ferrer Jeffrey. Flores. Portez. Frasco. Fresnedi. Fuente Bella. Galang. Galeios. Garbin. Garcia Albert. Garcia Dante. Garcia Jose Arturo. Garcia Karen Hope. Garcia Maria Angela. Gardiola. Garin. Gachalian. Gato. Klepa. Go. Gomez. Gonzales Alexandria. Gonzales Alisa Micaela. Gonzales Christopher Sheen. Gonzales Roy. Goriseta. Guico. Gintu. Gulyas. Gutierrez. Hernandez Charizan. Hernandez Dennis. Hernandez Ferdinand. Hernandez Ramil. Hofer Hasim. Orebata. Ismula. Iway. Javier. Ko Antonio. Ko Elisa. Ko Wilton. Kong Hun. Ko. Labad Labad. Laxon. Lagbas. Lagdameyo Jose Manuel. Lagdameyo Monique Yasmin Maria. Lagman. Lagon Daphne. Lagon Sunny. Lara. Lasatin. Ledesma. Legassion. Legarda. Legaspi. Leviste.
Speaker, my vote is no and I would like to reserve my right to explain my vote.
Libanan. Lopez. Gloria. Loyola. Luistro. Lumayag. Makapagal Arroyo. Makasait. Maceda. Madrona. Malapitan. Mangudadatu. Manikis. Maranyon. Marcoleta.
Mr. Speaker, Sagip Partelis votes no and I reserve my right to explain my vote after nominal voting. Thank you.
Marcos. Marquez. Mastura. Matibag. Matugas. Mendoza. Mercado. Mercado Revilia. Miraflores. Momo. Montes. Nava. Nazal. Nisai. Nolasco. Oeminal Henry.
Mr. Speaker, I vote no and I would like to explain my vote in writing. Thank you.
Oeminal Sancho Fernando. Odukado. Olivares. Ongchuan. Ordanes. Orreta. Ortega. Oano Dizon. Padernos. Panaligan. Pancho. Panotes. Pasqual. Pérez. Pimentel. Plaza. Plato. Poe. Primicias Agabas. Homaren. Puno. Kimbo. Rama. Repto. Rehencha. Remulia. Revilia Brian. Revilia Ramon Yolo. Ridón. Rivera. Robes. Rodríguez Yelogio. Rodríguez Máximo. Rodríguez Rufus. Roman. Romualdes Andrew Julian. Romualdes Ferdinand Martin. Romualdes Yeda Marie. Romualdo. Romulo. Roque. Sagar Baria. Sacaluran. Salceda. Salí. Salvación. Salvador. Salvame. San Fernando.
Mr. Speaker, Kamangagawa Partelis votes no and I will explain my vote after the nominal voting.
Santos Maria Alana Samantha. Santos Mark Anthony. Shimura. Singson Rachel. Singson Ronald. Singson Mihán. Solon. Suwan. Swansing Bella Vanessa. Swansing Micaela Angela. Suárez. Sunthay. Taliado.
Mr. Speaker, I vote no and I reserve my right to explain my vote.
Tan Ayman. Tan Joseph. Tan Keith Mika. Tan Reynolds Michael. Tan Samir. Tan Stephen James. Panchai. Tan Uatko. Tariela. Teodoro. Tereng. Teves. Bianco. Tien. Tiño. Tolentino. Tuán. Tulfo Jocelyn. Tulfo Ralph Wendell. Tupas. Tuitor. Ti. Umalí. Ungab. Uy De Carlo. Uy Roberto. Valeriano. Vargas. Vargas Alfonso. Veloso. Veloso Tuason. Vergara. Villia. Villia Fuerte Miguel Luis. Villia Fuerte Vincenzo Renato Luigi. Villanueva. Villarica. Violago. Yamsuan. Yap Arthur. Yap Christoperson. Yap Edvick. Yap Eric. Yap John Gisnel. Yapko. Inárez. Yu Jayzel Victoria. Yu Joseph Kim. Yulo. Zamora Maria Carmen. Zamora Isabel Maria. Subiri.
Second call in consideration of Committee Report Number Twenty-Eight. Akop Almonte Amatong Ang Aumentado Bagau Bautista Clode Bautista Joan Monique Bautista Lim Beltran Viron Bondok Castro Kawanko Jaime Eduardo Cruz Ricardo Kuah Dayang Hira Daza De Venesha De Los Santos Alfred Diokno Duterte Harold James Duterte Omar Vincent Duterte Paolo D Ian Paul Erise Cortez Frasco Garbin Glepa Go Gomez Gulyas Hofer Hasim Ko Antonio Ko Elisa Ko Laxson Makapagal Arroyo Makasait Matugas Momo Rama Rehencha Saqualuran Salceda Sally Tan Reynolds Michael Tan Stephen James Bianco Tien Tolentino Tulfo Ralph Wendell Totor Ungab Villanueva Yap Edvick Yap Eric
With two hundred forty-nine members voting in the affirmative, five in the negative, eleven abstentions, the findings and recommendations contained in Committee Report Number Twenty-Eight are hereby adopted. Majority Leader.
Mister Speaker, I move to suspend session for a few moments.
Session suspended. Yes, sir. Session resumed. Majority Leader.
Mister Speaker, I move to recognize the Honorable Leviste to explain his vote.
Honorable Leandro Leviste is hereby recognized.
Distinguished colleagues, ang boto ko ay no, hindi dahil perpekto si Congressman Barzaga. Pero dahil kwestionable para sa akin, na minadali natin itong desisyon dahil ngayong hapon lang natin nakuha ang Committee Report na ito at si Congressman Barzaga lang ang sinampahan ng kaso ng Committee on Ethics. Ang boto ko ay no, lalo na dahil inuuna natin ang kaso niya kaysa sa mga mas seriosong isyung kinakaharap ng isa sa mga kasamahan natin. Isang kapwa kong batanggenyo na nandito ngayon na bumoto sa kaso ni Congressman Barzaga. Hindi ba nakakahiya maging miembro ng Kongreso dahil parang naging normal na meron tayong isang kasamahan na inakusahan na nagbayad para sa mahigit one hundred billion pesos ng mga kontrata sa DPWH? Para bang tinatanggap natin na normal lang magkaroon ng kasamahan na iniugnay sa bagnanakaw ng bilyong-bilyong piso na hindi iniimbestigahan na ng Committee on Ethics, Public Works, o InfraCom? Samantalang inuuna natin ang kaso ni Congressman Barzaga. Habang hindi man lang natin pinaglalaanan ng masusing atensyon ang mas mabigat na aligasyon, lumalabas na parang okay lang magnakaw sa Kongreso. Nakatala na sa kasaysayan na sa gitna ng matinding kontrobersya sa korupsyon. Ito ang inuna ng Kongreso. At parang lang walang mali sa ginagawa ng isa sa ating kasamahan. At tayo mismo ay ngayon sumisira sa imahe ng Kongreso. Mahiya naman tayo.
Majority Leader.
Mister Speaker, I'd like to recognize the Honorable Marco Leta for his explanation of his vote.
Honorable Marco Leta is hereby recognized.
Mister Speaker, distinguished colleagues, isang mapagpalayang hapon po sa ating lahat. I rise to place on record this manifestation of support for Honorable Francisco Kiko Barzaga and to express my strong opposition to any move seeking his suspension from this August chamber. From Voltaire's philosophy of tolerance and freedom of expression, this line is often quoted. "I may not agree with what you say, but I will defend to the death your right to say it." The independence of the legislature ensures that members may speak fully, frankly, and fearlessly on matters of public interest. Honorable Barzaga's statements directed at alleged corruption within the government falls within the fullest and most urgent category of political expression. To finalize him for raising concerns on corruption, which the Constitution itself mandates Congress to check, is to subvert the very principle of parliamentary privilege. Mister Speaker, two thousand four pa lang po, andito na po ako bilang Chief of Staff po ng aking ama. Nakita ko po ang mga oposisyon na grabe magtuligs sa administration. Nandiyan po ang mga magigiting na miembro ng makabayan block na sila sa Turo Campo. Lisa Masa, Joel Berador, na talagang ah magigiting na mga pigura ng oposisyon. Pero hindi namang po sila naharap sa mga ethics case gaano man sila kaanghang magsilita laban sa administration. My dear colleagues, Honorable Barzaga is seated in this chamber because the people of Dasmarinyas City Cabite place their trust in him, as affirmed through the ballot. Article Six, Section Six of the Constitution states that members of this house derive their authority exclusively from the electorate. Ano po ba ang mas mabigat na kasalanan? Ang magmyao o ang magnakaw? Ano ba ang mas mabigat na kasalanan? Ang magvideo at magselfie at magpost ng pagkadismaya sa gobyerno ang isang batang congressman? O ang ginawang sistematikong pagnanakaw sa gobyerno? O at pagsimot sa bilyong-bilyong mga bilyon-bilyong pisong mga bilyon-bilyong piso sa kaba ng bayan sa pamamagitan ng mga ghost projects? Ang mga posts ni Kong Myao ay mistulang alingaw-ngaw lamang ng salobin ng nakararaming mga Pilipino. To impose the penalty of suspension is to overturn the sovereign choice of the people. That remedy is reserved only for conduct so reprehensible and destructive of the institution that it overwhelms democratic legitimacy. No such circumstance exists here. Honorable Barzaga's only act was to express his views regarding corruption in government, a matter of public concern, central to democratic oversight. Let na the House of Representatives be weaponized against its own members. Thank you very much, Mister Speaker.
Majority Leader.
Mister Speaker, we'd like to recognize the Honorable Congressman Nazal to give his explanation of his vote.
Congressman, Honorable San Fernando is hereby recognized.
Thank you, Mister Speaker. If we don't believe in freedom of expression for people we despise, we don't believe in it at all. This quote serves as the foundation of this representation's vote. Totoo na maraming nasabi, pinahayag, at ginawa ang kinatawang si Representative Barzaga na hindi aakma sa pamantayang inaasahan sa isang halal na opisyal. But this begs us to question, what really is unethical behavior? While I agree that us lawmakers are held to a higher degree of ethics and decorum, thought should not work as to stifle free speech and debate. Lawmakers must be free to say what we want, especially on issues involving national importance. Representative Barzaga's actions and words may not fit the usual mold of a traditional lawmaker, but who decides if the mold or what mold is correct? I understand these are difficult questions to answer, and I am unsure if there is any. But one thing I am sure of is that plundering the coffers of government through ghost infrastructure projects is what's unethical. The Committee Resolution sets a dangerous precedent. Ganito ho ba tayo kabalat sibuyas at allergic sa mga naiibang pananaw? Should our subjective judgments of Representative Barzaga's ethics supplant the will of the electorate? Hayaan natin ang mamamayan ng Dasmarinyas, ang humatol sa mga ginagawa ni Representative Barzaga, kung sa ba ay karapat dapat na maging kinatawan nila. My dear colleagues, let us not erode whatever little trust that the public has left for this house at a time where allegations of massive corruption has been plaguing our beloved institution. It is callousness to sanction one of its most vocal critics, however eccentric, uncouth, or unpalatable his mode of delivery may be. Hindi po sa pamamagitan ng aksyong ginawa natin kay Representative Barzaga mababawi ang credibilidad ng ating institusyon. What we need is to bring the public's trust back in this house and this representation firmly believe that this move will not help us to move in that direction. Yun lang ho, Mister Speaker, marami hong salamat.
Majority Leader.
Mister Speaker, I move to recognize the Honorable Bong Suntay.
Honorable Bong Suntay is hereby recognized.
Mister Speaker, distinguished colleagues, ang boto ko ay nakahugat sa malinaw at tahasang proteksyon na ibinigay ng Constitusyon. Proteksyon na hindi natin maaaring baliwalayin dahil lamang hindi natin nagustuhan ang pananalita ng isang kasapi. Ang boto ko ay nakaangkla sa pinakamamahal, na kalayaan, na pundasyon ang ating saligang batas. Nakukit sa Article Three, Section Four, under Freedom of Speech, na nagsasad na nolo shall be passed abridging the freedom of speech, of expression, and of the press. Ito ang pundasyon ng lahat ng democraticong lipunan. Its shield is broad and its protection is deep. It extends even to speech that is sharp, incendiary or inflammatory. Constitutional protection is not limited to speech that is polite, convenient, or comfortable. This freedom is not ornamental. It is the life It is the lifeblood of a democratic discourse, the very air that allows truth to move, compete, and ultimately prevail in the marketplace of ideas. In every Congress, in every era, disagreements, mabigat man, um, masakit, ay mangyayari. But our duty is not to silence this comfort. Our duty is to allow debate, to permit critique, and to safeguard the right of each member to speak without fear that dissent itself becomes punishable. Totoo, the circumstances and expressions involved fall short of decorum expected in this house. Hindi natin kinukonsinti ang pamamaraan o pagkasabi. Hindi natin tinatanggal ang bigat ng responsibilidad sa pagpili ng salita. Ngunit, falling short of decorum does not remove constitutional protection. The speech may be harsh. It may offend sensibilities. It may jar our sense of propriety. But so as long as it remains within the realm of expression guarded by the Constitution, this chamber cannot treat protected speech as punishable misconduct. Democracy does not mature through silence or suppression. It goes through robust exchange, matinding banggaan ng pananaw o mga malalamang diskursso ng pag-iisip. Kunsaan ang katotohanan, ay siyang huling magtatagumpay. I cast a no vote because imposing sanction here creates a chilling effect, not only on the member involved, but on all who depend on this chamber as a forum for candor, for courage, and confrontation when needed. Hindi ito ang panahon para paliitin ang espasyo ng pagsasalita. Ito ang panahon para palawakin, palakasin, at pangalagaan ito. Freedom of speech is not defended only when it is easy. It must be defended precisely when it is difficult, when the speech is unwelcome, unpopular, or uncomfortable. That is the true test of our commitment to constitutional principles. Thus, with earnest respect for this institution and with fidelity to the Constitution, I vote no to uphold our most cherished freedom, to preserve the vibrancy of democratic debate, and to affirm the truth. The truth emerges only when ideas are allowed to contend openly and without fear. Maraming salamat po.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move to recognize the Honorable Robert Nazal for his explanation.
Honorable Robert Nazal is hereby recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, my esteemed colleagues. While I acknowledge the profound importance of maintaining and enforcing the ethical standards of this house, my vote of no reflects two deeply held convictions. First, although the respondent's conduct was inappropriate, crass, and unbecoming of a member of Congress, I respectfully submit that the proposed 60-day suspension is grossly disproportionate to the offenses alleged. If he has indeed acted beneath the dignity of his office, then by all means, reprimand him, hold him to account. But discipline must always be commensurate to the transgression, and in this case, I believe this August chamber is responding with excessive severity. A reprimand with excessive... A reprimand being the initial and least severe action should have been the proper first recourse, especially where the conduct, while objectionable, does not involve corruption, criminality, abuse of authority, or behavior so grave as to render a member unfit for office. Second, voting no does not mean condoning his acts. It is instead a principled affirmation that fairness and due process are indispensable. The resolution before us does not specify the precise acts for which Representative Barzaga is to be sanctioned. Without such clarity, how can he meaningfully defend himself before the entire house? The most basic tenets of due process require that any member must be informed of the specific statements or post deemed punishable before the harshest penalty short of expulsion is imposed. If this house demands accountability, then we must likewise ensure fairness, otherwise we undermine the very integrity we claim to protect. Finally, this vote is also my gentle appeal to this chamber to re-center its energy on the people's mandate. At a time when Filipino families struggle with daily concerns such as rising prices, job insecurity, health burdens, educational gaps, our primary duty is to ensure that their material well-being remains the central business of the people's house. Let us not lose sight of the urgent fundamental issues that affect every household we swore to serve. A reprimand would have been a balanced, measured response, one that upholds institutional integrity without diverting the house's focus from the needs of our people. For these reasons, I register my view that a reprimand, not suspension, would have been the appropriate, proportionate, and constitutionally sound response under the circumstances. Thank you.
Majority Leader.
Speaker, I move to suspend session until tomorrow, December 2, 3 p.m.
Session suspended until tomorrow, Tuesday, December 2, at 3 o'clock.